Good evening. This is to formally advise that as required by MGL Chapter 30A, Sections 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16, 2021, as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, Yarmouth Select Board will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, October 22, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28 South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided on our town website. If we would all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We need to start with announcements. Bob, I understand. Do you have an announcement?
Yes, Madam Chair. I do have an announcement for the public and for the board. I've received in the office several inquiries, and there appears to be a great deal of misinformation that's swirling around regarding town interactions with the local Cranberry Bog out on Route 28. Some people report to us that they've been informed that the town is going to be taking a local Cranberry Bog by eminent domain, or else that the Cranberry farm stand is either going to be seized, or somehow impeded or threatened by the town's wastewater development. I just want to report to the board and to anyone listening that those statements are entirely untrue. First and foremost, folks need to know there are going to be no eminent domain takings, really, that we're aware of any properties in that area, let alone the Cranberry Bog. And there's also no wastewater treatment that's going to occur anywhere near Route 28. All of the wastewater treatment is going to be out at Buck Island Road. We're just working with the collection system out on Route 28. And there is a small pumping station that is proposed to be located on the Capabilities property that is adjacent to where the bogs are located, but nothing on the bog property at all, or interfering with the bog property in any way. And I just want to say, folks should know that we've met in my office, I met with the bogs operator, and he's indicated, I think, one concern that he has is he'd like to move and expand his pop-up trailer Cranberry sales location at some point in the future. And the town is working with him to get his plans, and we feel that there's plenty of room to provide that flexibility for moving that pop-up Cranberry store in the future. And also, related to initial concerns, the pumping station has already been moved farther away a little bit from the existing location of that trailer, with a new little road proposed to provide better access to that area. So anything that the town's doing for wastewater should in no way interfere with any bog operations. There's plenty of room to peacefully coexist out there and to protect the environment with that much-needed wastewater system, as well as protect the Cranberry Bog as well. So folks should know, the town supports agriculture. We have no ill will towards any of the bogs, and we're currently working now with the property owner to find out their future plans and, you know, work that in. So I just thought, you know, there's so many people that are asking questions about that. We should have that information out there, and so that just gives you a little update.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, public comments.
Liz Zargo. And I just wanted to say that I went to the school board meeting last night, and I was amazed. The emergency preparation plan that they reported on was incredible. And I also want to give a shout out to Tracy Post, because the discussion on the MCAS question was top drawer. These people had done their research, and they were qualified, and I learned so much. So we're really lucky to have a school committee that is that. They're outstanding. A lot of work, a lot of good work. Thank you.
Dorcas, you can't see this view is a little bit weird, but there is somebody with their hand up.
Oh, Joe Lynn.
Yes, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
I can indeed.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Zargo, for those comments. And I can tell you that as a school committee member, it was very refreshing, and it's, you know, we oftentimes, and the selectmen get it too, sometimes from me, but we often get criticism.
Correction, Joe, oftentimes from you.
Well, that's not going to stop. But I hope that I sometimes do congratulate you. And as a matter of fact, I think that we are, because of that communication, and I just want to read, because this is, I'm not acting as the liaison here, but it's just a public record of a motion that was approved last night that goes to my point. There was approval to use interest earned from capital stabilization fund for ongoing roof repairs of the Margarita Small Elementary School. And so I think that that shows an ongoing type of communication. I hope that it goes forward even more. But I did want to commend the town administrator on his announcement there, because there was a lot of confusion. I kind of held off on trying to get the information. I don't know if we can put something out on the website to clarify any of that. So I assume that the bog operator is now satisfied, that there's no movement for a special town meeting or anything, so maybe we can clarify that. But otherwise, I didn't want to get bogged down in some of the minutia. Sorry, I couldn't resist that one. But thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Ms. Zargo, because it really is, we do try to work with both the towns, and I think that the renewed going-forward communication will be best for all the towns, and I look forward to having that happen. So thank you very much, and I'll try to be more complimentary in the future.
We look forward to it.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have anyone else that would like to make a comment?
Okay, time to pop the balloon. I have a problem with the SRO officer issue. I don't know how many times we've given extra money to schools to support SROs. This is not the first time that they decided they didn't want to support them financially. I think they're very important for the kids. Have you ever seen, you know, them interact with the students? It's a huge help to some of these people, you know? You hear about the kids that don't really have a home to go to. That's, these guys are at home. The other one that I've mentioned a bunch of times, and I'm sure somebody's going to tell me I'm wrong, but if I was going to spend a bunch of money, I wouldn't spend it on ME Small. I would spend it on a Matikes. Even if it's a temporary measure to buy a few years, it has its issues, but it's, there are less issues than does ME Small have. And I think on a, like I said, on a temporary basis, you could probably do something at that school in a matter of, you know, single millions of dollars, instead of the idea of maybe floating another $100 million school, because I have a feeling that that will not fly. I talked to somebody recently, said, I moved here, my taxes were $2,000. He said, now they're $4,400. There's only so much people can go for. You know, you think about, and again, what happens with, we vote on things at town meeting, and it takes sometimes years before it shows up on the tax bill, and they don't know why their tax bills are going up, right? So the schools just coming on, the DPW, various things that we've done through the past. So you've got to be very leery and cautious about moving forward with another big school right now. I've been told that, well, I know, there's an effort underway to plant daffodils for beautification of the town. Apparently, a town employee told these people on certain property, they couldn't plant daffodils because they're not pollinators. I talked to somebody about trees, the dead trees, the dangerous trees that are still out there. And we spent a lot of money on a lift so that people could actually, you know, take care of these things. And they, and this could be BS, I don't know, but they told me there's a policy that if they cut down a tree, another tree has to be planted in its place. Mill Creek Park, I spoke to Dorcas quickly on the way in. I don't know if anybody noticed the poor condition of that park. There's a bench there that's supposed to look out over Mill Creek. The vegetation in front of that bench is this tall, and that's no exaggeration, which means nothing's been done to that park since we did it, which was 2007 or '08, somewhere around there. You know, if we keep making parks and we don't, it's like the sidewalks. If you keep making sidewalks and parks and you don't commit to taking care of them after you do them, why bother? You know? Go to lower, the lowest possible maintenance you can do. You know, same thing with, why do we keep planting grass? We all know it's bad for our environment. We know it's more work to take care of. I saw something about irrigation, money going to the drive-in site. Don't plant grass. You don't have to mow it, you know? Probably put like beech grass that you cut down once a year. I've also been told that to volunteer in this town on a committee, you have to be a registered voter now. Again, don't know if it's true, but this is what somebody told me. And I know years ago, there was a policy set forth by a town administrator, and I've seen the letter, so I know it exists, about no idling of town vehicles. And yet, every time I see town vehicles, and I don't care if it's one or six, they're all just sitting there running. For what? It's not good for the trucks, and it costs a lot of money for fuel. So, you know, it's, people have got to get with, figure out the program and get with it, because it's like, the inmates are running the asylum out there, unfortunately. Because I don't know, I know it's through change of personnel over the years, things get forgotten, but at some point, somebody's going to say, this is not okay, and you're going to do it that way or this way. And I don't see it happening. I'll stop there, but I got more.
Thank you. I see Vita Morris. Vita?
Hello. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Like Mr. Sears, I seem to have a whole bunch of topics, but I'll try to keep it to just two, I think. There doesn't seem to be any additional material on the resource officer on the police presentation, so I don't know where that stands. All I can say is that the school committee debated, you know, that issue and had some very good information when they decided that they could do with one resource officer at the new school. This is what the issue is about right now. And I don't understand, I know the union's pushed very hard to keep the second officer in that school, and I guess I'll wait to see what the presentation is about, and I hope it's not too late to keep that in advance. Now, we have, I mean, a total disaster with, speaking of the schools, in the test results. I think the superintendent is sitting there, if I'm not mistaken. Can he give us an explanation what exactly happened there? I mean, as bad as those test scores used to be, this one is catastrophic. And I think that the selectmen and the town administrator need to sit down with the, and with the people from Dennis and the superintendent, and demand an explanation. He's pushing for another Taj Mahal here while the scores are coming in. I mean, to think that the Massachusetts score for the whole state was at 49%, and we were at 27% for math. It is catastrophic, and something needs to be done about that, first and foremost, before we talk about any new buildings or anything, any more expenditures on behalf of the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Vita. Do we have any other public comment?
No, no one on the board.
No, please, go ahead, Dr. Smith.
Mark Smith, Superintendent, Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District. Just for, because I know the SRO presentations, or the chief, Chief Lennon is going to speak, and I know there were a couple of questions at the last select board meeting, so just for reminder on a couple of the previous, or sort of what got us to where we are from the school district's perspective, I just want to remind sort of the budget situation that we found ourselves in last year, and just to make sure that we're having the right conversation, that it wasn't a conversation around the school district not believing that school resource officers are not important. But last year, fully level service budget that we originally presented, to where we ultimately landed the budget that the voters approved, that was a slightly over a $2 million reduction. Ultimately, we ended up laying off 35 and 1/2 positions across the district, which did include not funding the two resource officers. And I know there's, there's ultimately, and it's a conversation that Chief Lennon and I had, where we had added a resource officer that ultimately didn't end up getting billed, but at the time, I was planning to have to build for that second, so what would be three Yarmouth resource officers, but still, so, you know, sort of, what's the word? I'm looking for semantics about whether or not it's one resource officer or two resource officers, but having a second resource officer at the intermediate school. And we made that decision based upon two things. One, looking at the size of our schools and the age, so looking at an intermediate school, which is grades four, five, and then six, seven, and the number of kids at that school, and the ages of the kids at that school, and then looking across the region, and how are those types of schools staffed with resource officers? And then again, at the size of our high school, and comparatively sized high schools, and how many, how other high schools staff with resource officers? And then again, looking at the scope of the problem that we had, which was a budget that needed to be reduced. And, you know, I want to map that against other things that I presented, which is the fact that our enrollment still continues to increase. So we reduced 33 and 1/2 educator-level positions in, against an enrollment that continues to increase over the last four years. So just want to put that in the context of the larger conversation that we're having. So thank you.
Can I ask, is it appropriate to ask questions? I don't know if you're leaving, Dr. Smith, or if you'll be here for the presentation.
Yeah, and I'm happy to, I came because I knew this conversation was happening, so I'm happy to come up if there are other questions at any time.
Okay. I have several questions for him, because I kind of was not here for that part of the budget cycle. And I watched the presentation last night on school safety, and I thought it was amazing, and it was great to hear that we actually have nine backup officers that are trained for school resource. But what I didn't hear, and I'm a little unsure of, is you're talking about, we have two school resource officers at the intermediate school. Is that correct? Can you just, can you just break down what we have and what Dennis has? Because I'm just curious how they're funding theirs, and how much of it is being funded through your budget now as opposed to our budget?
So I can, so the way, so if I go back to last year, so it's okay. So last year, the staffing model was there was two officers at the intermediate middle school. Both of those were Yarmouth officers. And there were two officers at the high school, one from the town of Dennis and one from the town of Yarmouth. I'm not screwing anything up, right? And so the, the three of those four officers was the, the way things were when I first showed up on day one. So the two officers, one from Dennis and one from Yarmouth at the high school, and the one officer at the, who had previously been at Matikes, so would have been a Yarmouth officer. Chief Lennon and I had a conversation early in my time as superintendent about adding a second SRO at, and this is where we hadn't budgeted as a school, and he came asking, would we be able to potentially cover at least part of that cost in that first year? That bill never came from the town, because the way it's structured is the, both, and it's the same arrangement for Dennis and Yarmouth. The benefits, the training, any sort of ancillary costs are covered on the town side, but the straight salary is paid, we reimburse the town, the town, you know, the paycheck to the officer comes from the town, but then we get a bill, and then we pay, we essentially are reimbursing the town. It comes, I think the two towns bill it differently, but it comes, I think, like, I think we get one check like half, or one bill like halfway through the year, and then another bill at the end of the year for the salaries for the officers.
So it was, so the district essentially paid for three officers, or was it the four three Yarmouth?
Paid for, at the end of the day, last year, we paid for three. Two Yarmouth officers, one Dennis officer. Now, going into this year, we only are budgeted to pay for one from each town.
So that means that there would be no resource officer at the middle school?
Or one officer at the high school and one officer at the intermediate school. That's not, we're currently staffed the same as we were last year, which, you know, the chief can talk about how that's happening, but we really haven't had much, other than we don't have the fourth officer isn't currently stationed at the school at all. But we're sort of back to pre-my arrival.
Thank you for being here today, Dr. Smith, and if you wouldn't mind staying in case there should be any further questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
On our next item on the program today, we have the police chiefs' update on the warrant articles. Chief Lennon? Since we've started talking about the school resource officer, I'd suggest, why don't we continue that conversation now? And we can go back to the public safety sign-on after this.
First, I would just like to say that Dr. Smith and I have had some very good conversations about this, and I'm sure we're both on the same page. We're concerned about the safety of the students and the teachers at the school. And historically, the town of the school paid for three positions, so there were two at the high school, and then one at Matikes Middle School. When they built the new school, and Sean Brewer, who's at Matikes, moved over to the new school, and then they brought the students in from, in from Dennis, we didn't add a second SRO. So the population that Sean was working with went from 400 to 800. So based on the, and yes, they're younger kids, and they, they need less attention, but the SRO program is much more than just, you know, dealing with criminal activity. Our officers are there, working with the teachers, working with the parents, building relationships with the children at a very young age, which we think is extremely important. You lay that baseline foundation on a third, fourth, fifth grader, and then you can work that through. We are developing relationships that pay off exponentially throughout the years. So the Yarmouth Police Department took a look at it and said, there are so many people going into that complex, and I said this at the Finance Committee meeting. If you were on Station Ave between 7:30 in the morning and 3:30 in the afternoon, you now see the amount of traffic that is in there, and it's generally because of the schools. We have, you know, between the three schools, and I probably get the number wrong, but there's well over 2,000 students between those three schools, hundreds of faculty members, parents dropping off and picking them up at different times, the school buses going back and forth. That is our most densely populated area of our community, with our most vulnerable population throughout the school district from 7 o'clock in the morning till 3:30 in the afternoon. So as the chief, I think it is important that I point out that I think that there's a public safety issue up there, with only having one SRO in that school, because when we had two with Nick and with, excuse me, with Nick's at the high school, Alex Exaros and Sean Brewer, Alex was at the school to help in the morning, but then he would also move over to Station Ave Elementary and visit there. He would go to the, to the ME Small School on Higgins Co Road and visit there, and even pop into St. Pius. So having that fourth officer gave us a couple of things. One, if an officer took the day off, we had coverage, it wasn't costing us overtime. The SRO was able to leave the school and go someplace else and visit, and Alex is great with the kids, so he goes to the different schools. If for some reason, we had a runaway or something that required the officer to leave the school, we still had a presence there. So when I went to Dr. Smith early on his tenure, I tried to hit him in that honeymoon period and said, hey, let's work a deal. We had four, now we only have three. Can we work something out? And he did. He appropriated, and I think the number I gave him was about $40,000 to cover the position. We were able to write a grant through the, through the state for school security, so we ended up using that grant funding to cover that position versus going to the school. So it is correct. In that school year, they were paying for three, and he did appropriate money for us if we needed it. It just turned out that we didn't need it. So we did have conversation about it very early on, that we feel that it's very necessary, that it's important to have two at the, at the intermediate school, and then two at the high school. It's important for the high school, and I know that if you look at different models, depending on the town, some only have one SRO, and I would just say that that's the way they do it, but that's not, that doesn't mean it's the right way to do it. Our SROs, Officer Pat Scorosa and Officer Tibbetts, they work with, some of the people in those schools are, they're adults, and if there's a fight, you're dealing with an adult male. And Nick and John have had to de-escalate some fights, and they're dealing with people that are much larger than them, and they deal with some pretty significant issues at the school at times, so having two SROs there for us is critical. And then if somebody takes off, because they have to do a lot of training, the SROs have to have, I believe it's 24 hours of refresher training in addition to their 40 hours of in-service. So they are also up there, developing relationships with the students. So, and they've told stories of, they've been able to diffuse situations or recognize issue with students because of the relationships that they've built with them throughout the year. Nick can tell a story about, there's a student that got out of a car, and he just looked and said, what's wrong with you today? Something's off. And he was able to diffuse a situation, a family situation, before the student even made it into the school, because of the relationships that they developed. So that's, that's the avenue that we look at it from. And then the unfortunate part is, we always have to plan for the worst. If there's an issue in that area, and I look at it as one big complex, you now have three schools within about a third of a mile. If we have a significant event at any one of those schools, the other two are going to go into lockdown. Having four, ideally four officers there to deal with that issue when it first happens is going to be ideal. It's also in Yarmouth. Those schools happen to be in our town. We are going to be the responding officers, we are going to be the investigating officers. It's not a district police department's going to do it, it's the Yarmouth Police Department's going to fall on it. And God forbid something happens, people are going to look to me and say, what did you do? How did you, how did you prepare your staff? How did you prepare to deal with this issue? So that's why I'm here today, to say, I need additional funding to get another officer up there. We are in a bit of a unique situation where we're down seven officers. I have three in the academy, trying to put two into the Falmouth Academy, which is going to start in January, but I just had two retirements, and I have another three coming in the next nine to 12 months. So I'm two years away, if everything worked out, to be fully staffed. If we were fully staffed, I don't think we'd be having this conversation, because I would have the ability to take somebody off the road and drop them in the school, because that's what we did last year. We were able to, before I was able to get the money, we had more bodies, I was able to take Alex off the road and put him in the school, and we were able to absorb that. But just with staffing issues, a long-term injury, I don't have that luxury right now. My, by the way that we staff our shifts, we are at the bare minimum to put officers on the road. So when I look at things, I have to say, okay, what do I have to do? I have to pull people out of specialty positions, put them on the road, because that's the number-one priority, and then work from there. That's why Alex came out of the school and he's back on the road, and with losing the funding from the school, and they're only funding two positions now, Sean Brewer's at the school being paid solely by the police department. So it's a bit of a, you know, a double hit right there. But, and I, it's extremely important that we have these conversations, and I know that the SROs, working with Dr. Smith, they've been doing a great job rebuilding the safety program, getting it to where it is today. It was always very good, but they've taken it to the next level with the new program that they're introducing, and they're starting to roll out. And I believe they're at a PTO meeting tonight, talking about it more, in more depth, so that people know what we have done and what we plan to do moving forward. So the request for the warrant article is to get me through the fiscal year so that I can take Alex and put him back in the school, and bring us back up to the level that I feel very comfortable with. And then it also helps with if they have to go to training, or if I have, we have four other officers that are certified as SROs, because under the new police reform mandate, you Because under the new police reform mandate, you can no longer put an officer in the school that is not fully trained. We used to be able to take Officer Jones and say, go to the high school today, sit in the office. If something happens, it's an emergency, you, you can deal with it. We can no longer do that. They have to be certified as an SRO. So to do that, they have to go to 56 hours of training. And then we have to keep their training going. So two years ago, we sent several officers to that training, and so did the town of Dennis, so that we would have a cadre of part-time officers, keep their training up so that they could fill in if needed. But the, you know, back to where we are today, the requests, I talked to the town administrator, and the request is to give, to give me some relief, because my overtime budget cannot handle taking another person off the road and putting them in, putting them into the school. So that funding will allow us to do that.
Okay. Just going to take each item on its own. So are there any questions, Joyce?
I just wanted to ask about the training for SROs. How long does that take? Not in terms of hours, but in terms of like weeks or whatever to, for people to pursue those hours?
They break it into two sessions. There's a 40-hour class that you have to go, which is called the Basic School Resource Officer Program, which is run by a corporation called NASRO, which is the National School Resource Officer Organization. And then there's additional training that they do in a 24-hour segment. So they, they basically go away for two different times. One's 40 hours, the other one's 24, or 16, rather. And then, once they get certified initially as an SRO, and to do that, we have to report to the Peace Officer Standards of Training Commission and tell them that the officer has completed the training, sign off on them. They then sign off on them, that the officer is certified not only as a certified police officer, but as a certified school resource officer, meets the criteria. And there's criteria with that, that, for the, for the job description, certain things that they can't have in their background and, and so on and so forth. And they can't be somebody that we just select. It's got to be between the school district, actually the superintendent, myself putting a person forward. So there's a lot that goes into picking someone to be an SRO.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy?
Yeah. Well, personally, I believe that we should have school resource officers in every school. I've firsthand seen the value, I mean, having my son gone through the district. But they used to have the pre-prom crash, right? And I remember standing there with Nick one day and, without the student having to say a word, looked at him and walked into the school, and he just gave her the thing, and she was crying. And the fact that he knew her brother had been into a terrible car accident, and that was a very difficult situation for her, without even speaking a word, he comforted her. And I think that those relationships are extremely important. And because our police officers are in connection, obviously, at the school, but also with, with some of the home challenges that these students are, are going through, it's, it's much more than just a disciplinary thing. But in any event, what, what's frustrating is that, you know, in today's day and age, in terms of budget cut priorities for a school district, I think that this should be the last. I understand that there's, you know, there was significant cuts and a, and a lot of things that had to, you know, we have to make tough decisions. But, you know, in terms of a long-range plan, what, what's our plan next year? Like, we, we shouldn't, we should have a commitment to this program. And we've been here before with the school resource officers getting cut. So yeah, okay, so this year we get $55,000 for overtime costs. What's the plan for next year? Is there, are we, is it budgeted for? I just, I know we're like stop gapping it, but I just want to make sure that we have a long-range plan. And, you know, after watching Nick's presentation, bringing it into the next, you know, it's like, it's like we're half committed. You know, either you're committed or you're not committed to the program. So I don't know how you bring it to the next step. We can't even fund what's there now. It's very unfortunate. But, you know, like Joe Glenn said last night, and there's a lot of money out there. There's a lot of grant money. Is there, has the school district and the police department been able to work together to find any grant money to be able to secure the program in the future?
I've looked for grant money. So there's, there has been school safety grant funding in the past for positions, excuse me. I haven't seen any of that come around lately. And with those grants, they're, it's almost like the fire department's safer grant. So they give you an amount of money for, you know, 75% for year one, 50 for year two, 25 year three, and then you own it after that, so. And I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I don't have an answer for it, because I would like to not have this, not have to say, hey, I'm short. Or look at the SRO who thinks that they're going to school, because that's what they love to do. They're in there, they're in there for a reason, and they make a difference. And you made a point earlier, I just want to make sure I didn't misspeak. Discipline is, is, it's something that they, they don't get involved in discipline. It has, it's a criminal activity. That, that falls on the school. So, but when they're dealing with something, like, that is a small component of, of what they do on a daily basis. I can come back later with a presentation that Nick put, put together that shows the, the, the work that the SROs have done over the years and its relationship building that then drives down those, those issues that they have with the students in working with, with the, with the staff, with, with Dr. Smith's staff. And they work, they work in tandem. They're a team. They don't work independently, they don't work in silos. They have to work together, because that's the only way we're going to, we take care of the problems up there. And sometimes the children that go up there, that's their, that's the parental guidance that they get at the school. Because unfortunately, they, they don't really get it at home. And that's just a, that's just an unfortunate thing that we have. And our SROs have a, a deep impact on those students, as well as the teachers and the guidance counselors. And that's why it's very important. And I don't know how to move forward from this, because this is a short-term, this is a short-term measure. I would like to see it long-term. We are different than some other communities. Barnstable, they pay for their SROs, the, the police department does. Falmouth is the same, Mashpee does the same. But in some of those areas, they don't have as many SROs as we do. We put a presentation together, and I think it was right before the, right as, as Bob took over, the town administrator, excuse me, took over. And the cost for us, we costed it out to put a, an SRO in every school with a supervisor, and that's about a $700,000 a year price tag to cover all of our schools. And then when you, when you look at that, it's like, what does an SRO look like at the, at the, at the small school? Like, are they going to be able to interact with the kids the same way that they interact at the high school? So I don't know if, if that would be feasible to put someone in every school. But I think going back to the level that we were before, having that fourth SRO fully funded, whether it's through us or, or through the school, and being able to get out and get to those other schools. And then, you know, I've worked closely with, with Chief Brady from the town of Dennis. They have committed to eight hours of overtime a month to put somebody in the school when we need, when we need to, to cover it. And he's working with the same, you know, he's got the same issue. He's trying to do the same thing. He's short-staffed, he's got a limited overtime budget. If he can reassign somebody on the, on the day shift, he will do that. But ultimately, if they can't do it, I believe it falls on, on my shoulders. Because again, those schools are in the town of Yarmouth. And God forbid something happens. It's going to be, what did the Yarmouth Police Department do to protect it? So I think it's very important that I come forward and say, these are the challenges that we're facing. This is a way that I think that we can fix it today, and then have those deeper conversations later on to figure out where is the funding coming from in the future? Because it's difficult to run an operation and figure out, you know, coming into the schools, the school year, that I have to pull somebody out and then scramble to try and, to try and, to, to, you know, to plug those holes, so.
Well, the continuity piece, you know, with, with Alex being there and then not being there, and then being there again leaves a gap. And so I'd love to see a long-range plan for this. And I appreciate your comments about how it looks at Emmy Small. But I think in today's day and age, you know, it's extremely important. It's extremely important, unfortunately, but that's, that's where we're at. And I fully support this. It's unfortunate, it has to be done at an overtime expense, and that we don't, we don't have the personnel to do that. But that's, that's another conversation. So, thank you. And I appreciate you coming and, and supporting us, because you're right. And they, there are, there are schools, and you have a job to do in our town, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Mark?
All my questions have been answered. I support this request. Thank you.
As someone that has firsthand experience being the school bus driver, both the middle school and the high school being places, I've seen in action how critical the resource officer can be. And of course, we shouldn't forget Officer Finley either. I'm sure Finley's paid very well in dog baskets.
A little too well, if you see her lately, a little too well.
But, and as Tracy was saying too, to me, this is just critical. And I am sorry that it's come to this, but like Tracy also, I'm, I'm just cautioning that we need to look at a long-range plan and that I personally fully support our continuing with having the school resource officers there. And with our taking over the overtime funding for now, if that's what it takes to have those officers there. So if we could move on then to Article Two?
Do you want to do your recommendations now or wait to do them all at the end?
Why don't we, why don't we do all the recommendations at the end, I think, to make it simpler? Okay, Article Two. That's the public safety sign-on.
Okay, so this goes back a little while. Deputy Fire Chief's going to join me, because this is, this is an issue that we're, that we're both dealing with. So recruitment is down locally and nationally for, for public safety, police and fire. So a couple of months ago, the Fire Chief and I, we were brainstorming on what we could do to try and keep ourselves competitive. And that's really what we're trying to do. We're trying to stay competitive with the local market. It's hard to get people to come to Cape Cod and work down here, because housing is, is very expensive. So when we're trying to attract either lateral transfers, somebody who's already certified and can step right in after just 13 weeks of training, or somebody who goes to the academy, we run up against that. So the police department, we go to job fairs at Westfield, Fitchburg, Middleborough, Mass Maritime, and we are now being interviewed by the students. And they ask us, what is your starting pay? Do you have a sign-on bonus? How many vacation days do you get? Do you have the full Quinn bill? What is your education? And they do that with the different police departments that are there. And I'm sure the fire department's seeing the same thing. So recently, within the past, you know, recent, I said within the past year or so, Nantucket's always been a police department that has had to use sign-on bonuses to attract people to go over there. But other departments have, have started the same thing. So Barnstable now does a $7,500 sign-on bonus. You get $2,500 to start, $2,500 upon the completion of your field training program, and then $2,500 six months after that. Chatham has a $7,500 signing bonus, very similar. Provincetown has a, you get $5,000 if you have less than five years on. You get $10,000 if you're more than five years on. Truro has a signing bonus, but it's, it's different. That gets, that gets broken down weekly into their paycheck. And they, they do that based on the number of years and experience that you have coming to the department. So in looking at ways to keep us competitive, again, with the local market, we have a very large police department right next door that is coming out of civil service in probably the next six months. The town of Barnstable has contracted with a consultant to bring them out of civil service. We never had to compete with Barnstable before, because you, you had to be a Barnstable resident to take the test and get hired there. So we were able to grab people that couldn't go there because they weren't residents. And we had a very good feeder system for bringing in lateral transfers. Once Barnstable comes out of civil service, we have now gone from almost on a level playing field to way down, because they have, their insurance is 70/30, they have the full Quinn bill, and they have a $7,500 signing bonus. They're a larger police department with more activity, more specialty positions. So somebody coming in would probably be drawn more to a department like that. Not necessarily, but they could. So I spoke to Sarah, our HR director, about it. And she said in her former life in the private sector, it's something that they would do. So we made a presentation to the town administrator and discussed what it could possibly look like. And we came up with the idea to put, to put a warrant article out, $100,000. It would be 50 for the police and 50 for fire, 5,000 per hire. So if we had to hire 10 people the next, X amount of years, we, we would be able to fund it. And, you know, in the, in the past 18 months, we lost three officers to the state police. We've had other people that have interviewed other places as well. So we're just, you know, this is really a, a measure to help us stay competitive. Because now, being down seven people and looking at, looking ahead, if we were lucky enough to hire a lateral transfer, I could be fully staffed in a year to 18 months. If we're not lucky enough to hire a lateral, and I have to put people through the academy without any retirements, I'm probably looking at closer to two years to be fully staffed. Because, and I think there was another, another piece that I sent out, that when you look at the cost, if we hire a, a lateral, using round numbers, we pay them about $20,000 in salary when they're being trained. There's a $2,800 equipment fee that we pay for. Medical and psychological screening is $1,700. You come up to just under $25,000 for somebody who comes in that's already trained. If we put somebody through the academy, that number is $63,000. So it's, it's beneficial for us to get somebody who's, who's a lateral transfer, bring them in from someplace else. Because number one, we're saving a lot of the money. A lot of that money is, is going out in salary. Because when you hire somebody and you put them in the academy now, we cannot pay somebody at a student officer rate. There used to be a reduced rate that we would pay them. When we hire them now, they come in at the starting, at where they would be. So if we hire somebody with a bachelor's degree, they're coming in at $72,000 a year, and they're in the academy. Well, I'm filling that position with somebody on overtime to keep the staffing levels up. So not only am I paying $72,000 for the six months that the person's in the academy, whatever that number works out to be, I'm also covering their shift with somebody on overtime. So the benefit for us to become very competitive with our neighbors and do the sign-on bonus, and that's only, that's only one piece of it, but we feel that that would be a step in the right direction so that when somebody does look at us and say, Yarmouth, what can you offer me? We can offer you A, B, C, and D, and I think the signing bonus would help out as well.
And we are, we're both, we're in the same situation. We're almost a mirror of how things are going as far as sending people away to training, covering them back with overtime, trying to find people. And for us, it's, it's the districts that are, Barnstable districts, that they're, they're, they're higher pay, more competitive, you know, benefits and things like that too. So we're, we're in competition with districts, just as the chief was saying. It's, things are, things are changing for us, and it's, we're, we're chasing those, those hires at this point.
Do you have to go through that with the district personnel? Do they require residency? Or can they come from anywhere?
Residency is, is being lifted more because, you know, the, the housing crisis that we have on the Cape. So that they, they can branch farther out also. It's just their, their benefits and things like that are a little bit better. Salary wages are a little bit higher. And, you know, that, that's what's attracting them to the districts over, like, say, per state town.
Okay. Joyce, do you have any questions?
Thank you. I wanted to return to a conversation that we had the last time the chief was here. And I suspect it affects the fire department as well. Spending a lot of money to train people and then losing them to departments that may offer them financial or, or better healthcare incentives. Does it seem to you that there's a possibility that someone could collect signing bonuses at multiple departments? Like, just shifting every two years? When we give a signing bonus, are we planning to lock them in for a specific period?
We, shortly after I got promoted, I was talking to Sarah, and we brought it to the town administrator. We actually implemented a, an employment contract back in January of 2003, where now anybody that we hire has to sign a contract that the town administrator signs and the employee signs. And we do liquidated damages up to $14,000. So if we hire somebody, we just had it happen, we hired somebody, we put him into the academy, and we unfortunately had to separate them. Well, we prorated it, and that person owes us $6,000 back for equipment, training, time. So we, we were able to come up with a number, and I used it. The Provincetown Police Department uses it, the Nantucket Police Department uses it. It's been tested and in court, and it has held up. So now every employee that comes and they want to work with us, we make them sign the contract. And we spell out what they will owe us back in the event that they leave before a certain period of time. So if they stay a full three years, they don't owe us anything. But if they decide to leave before that, we go back to the contract and we look. And I would work with the town administrator and with Sarah and council if needed to figure out what we, what we would go after them for, for lack of a better term. But, but we have that in place. And I actually sent the contract over to the Fire Chief last week, so he could take a look at it and see if that was something that they wanted to implement. But it has been. But it has been used successfully by other police departments to get back some of the funding that we expend when we hire somebody, because it is, it is very expensive.
Exactly.
Very helpful.
And I, I do want to just underscore that last point that he made. By working together here and establishing a program, it allows us to standardize our procedures among the Fire and the Police Department, and, and I think it elevates the best practices of having that clawback provision. If you recall, remember, we were talking about the, you know, we had a person that was trained by Yarmouth, and then as soon as they were trained, they, they left, and we didn't have any of that, that clawback. By, by addressing it, I think holistically like this, it enables us to kind of elevate for all of the departments, and in the future, if this initial pilot is successful, we're able to gain some traction, it may even be appropriate for truck drivers and, and other types of positions that we just can't recruit for. And the last piece that, that I do want to mention, that I was very encouraging with the chiefs to work together on this, to come forward, meet with the select board on it. And the way that we've structured this article is it places it under the administration of the select board. So before any implementation is made, the entire package, including what provisions for safeguarding the town, will come back and be approved by the select board. So we're going to, this is our, our pilot program to try to be a little more aggressive in the recruitment, to be competitive, to stay up with everyone, and make sure that we're fully staffed, and so we're hoping that working together on it like this, we're successful.
Tracy, do you have any questions?
Well, that was one of my questions that Joyce asked, of how, how are we going to roll it out in terms of making sure that somebody doesn't keep jumping ship to, to get it? I mean, there's got to be a, a time. It looks like Provincetown does 50% on the start and 50% after a year, after a year, which sounds, which sounds good. When you get, you, and I have to refresh my memory because it's been a while since we talked about the Quinn bill. You said a lot of those towns were fully funded with the Quinn bill. Where are we at with that?
We are at, we're half. So you get 10% for an, for an associate's, 15 for a bachelor's, and 20 for a master's. So it's, it's less than, than what the full, the one, the full Quinn is. Actually, I'm sorry, we're 5, 10, and, we're 5, 10, and 15. The full Quinn bill is 10, 20, and 25. So in Barnsville, if you have an associate's, you get, you get 10. Yarmouth, you get 5. A bachelor's, you get 20. Here, you get 10, and then 25 for a master's. In Barnsville, we get 15.
All right. And in terms of your requirements, too, is the college degree still a requirement of employment?
No, we, we took that out, so we have, I don't want to say we lowered our standards, but we, we adjusted our standards, because like many other places, and I've used this numerous times, so I will date myself. In 1992, when I sat at the Matiche's Middle School, I sat with 400 people to take the test to get a job in Yarmouth. We stopped testing because it was costing applicants money, and we weren't, we weren't getting anybody. When we used to have 150 take a test, we were getting five, and it was becoming cost prohibitive. So we've looked at different avenues. There's companies out there that offer online testing if you want to just jump in and do it, and then there's kind of a pool. We went away from that. We have a rolling enrollment process, so we post all the time. You see, we try and get creative with our different social media posts to try and attract laterals or, or academy-trained. We have one person right now that is going to go to the academy. He is a GED. We signed on with a company where he had to take a competency exam to make sure that his English and everything was, was up to date, so his grammar, rather, so he would be able to succeed in the academy. We hired a company that does independent testing for us so we could make sure that he would beat the requirements to move forward, because there are some very good candidates out there that just, for one reason or another, didn't graduate high school and never went to college, and we're missing them. So we're, we're expanding our horizons to see what we can get. You know, this gentleman's in his 30s. He's got great life experience, just ran into a couple of speed bumps when he was younger, and just went back and got his GED, but he's a very solid individual, and we're very confident he's going to be a great representative of the Yarmouth Police Department. So we've, we've had to shift gears. There are some police departments that still mandate an initial education to get in, but, you know, I looked at the Massachusetts State Police and some other organizations, and they don't require, they require a GED with other qualifying experiences. So we're looking at education and life experience to determine if the person would be worthwhile moving forward.
Wow, different world we're living in right now than back in the day. Well, Bob answered my other question, because I, I was thinking holistically as a town, why we're, I know that it's extremely important to fill our shifts for public safety, but, you know, there are a lot of jobs that have gone unfilled. So I'm looking forward to seeing how, how this goes forward and to see if it makes a difference in your recruiting. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Mark?
No, I'm, I'm fine. You've answered all my questions. I, I support this.
Let's move on then to Article Five, Cruiser Upfitting Cost. Chris, thank you very much. We'll take you off the hot seat. Scott, I'm sorry. Thank you. As I said, I have trouble with names sometimes.
Still the new guy.
Yeah.
He's doing great. Thank you, Scott.
So two fiscal years ago, when I brought to the Town Administrator, let's lease some cruisers because we could flatten things out, interest rates were different than they are today. Our last lease, the interest rate was 7.69% on the cruisers. So in, in doing some research, I realized that when we buy a cruiser, we pay for everything. So that's about a $23,000 upfitting cost as well, which could be purchasing a new flashlight, transferring over a light bar, having them install a USB port someplace, so trying to figure out a way to lessen some of the financial burden. We figured that if we still leased the car, because that's going to keep our payments flat, but use a, use it, a special article for the upfitting costs, we'll, you know, per car, we'll save probably, in interest alone, over the, the life of the lease, probably $1,800. So I know it's not a ton of money, but just looking at it, because I don't know when the, when the lease interest rates are going to start going back down again, but again, initially, when we first started looking at them, they were much lower than where they are today, and leasing seemed to be the way to go to flatten it so we didn't have those, those peaks and valleys coming in one year for $250,000 and the next year asking for $400. We were able to flatten it out, which we've been able to do. But then again, looking at it and figuring out where we are today, it just seems like it's a, the more fiscally responsible thing to do, to take the upfitting cost off of the lease. So we just leased the car for what it is, and it's unfortunate, in 2017, a Ford Explorer coming off the line was about $27,000, and now they're, they're over 40. And then we have to pay for the different pieces that have to go into it. So by taking that off, we're not, we're not leasing a flashlight for four years at 7%. We're just paying for it, and we're moving on. And then we'll have to take a look and see how we can bring that down even more, because I'm sure that there's other equipment that we can have. Our mechanic, Phil, is very talented, to see what he can move over for us once a new car comes in, and, you know, shave a little bit off of that as well. But that's the number we came up with. We're looking for, we're asking for four cars in FY '26, because we're at the, we were able, you know, again, working with the Town Administrator on, the best way to flatten things out, in three years, we were able to replace almost the entire patrol fleet. And we have two other cars that, the body is older, but we had to replace the engine sooner than we would have expected, and it was done under, under warranty. So although the, the vehicle might be a little bit older than we would like to have, the engines are almost brand-new, and we can run those a little bit longer and then turn them into like a utility car, like one that goes to the school or one that we use for court. But this...
Just don't idle them all day.
That's why we have the hybrids. Our engine shut off and we go to battery. We have to go to Plymouth and get them fixed, so we don't even want to go down that road. We're spending more gas bringing them to Plymouth to fix them than anything else. But anyway. So this was just a thought that I had. I brought it to the Town Administrator, you know, because I look at the, I look at the lease paperwork before it goes over to the Town Administrator for the final sign-off, and I've just seen the numbers go up, and I've asked Ford Credit why, and they just say, "Because that's the cost of doing business. That's where they are right now." So it'll save us a little bit of money on the next round of cruisers, because we just, we've just leased cars. So this is, this is going to be moving forward if we can do this. And then at the finest committee meeting, I know it was brought up, do we look, going back to the, the old way of doing things, just with a chunk of money and we just buy cars? But we are where we are today, and I think this is just a way that we can save a little bit of money, at least in FY '26, and potentially going forward.
Okay. Joyce?
That sounds like a good workaround by which the department would own the ancillary equipment and be able to reuse it, you know, if the car itself goes.
We own it anyway. When we buy a car, we own it anyway. We're just not paying Ford a, the cost and then interest to move it. So if Ford moves a light bar that we own, they're charging us $375 to move it, and then they're charging a 7.69% on that 375 to move it over, because it's part of the entire lease package. If we take that off, we're leasing the car for $41,000 over here, then all the equipment is in a, is in a bucket over here. Some stuff we can do, other things we can't. Our mechanic cannot rewire an LED light bar, but he can move a flashlight, he can move the USB charger. There's other things that he can do. So in the long run, we'll be saving money. And again, we're not, we're not saving a ton of money, but my round numbers, it's probably about, over the, of the life of the lease, probably about $1,800 per car if we do it this way.
And I have a follow-up question. It's kind of an economic development question. For what your mechanics wouldn't be able to do in terms of the ancillary equipment installation and, and transfer, would the rest of the labor be done on Cape?
We, it gets done at the dealership. So all the upfitting gets done at the dealership, which is either in Plymouth or Marlboro. There are no police cruiser manufacturers or resellers, for a better term, on Cape Cod. You have, and there's just a few, there's just a few in the state. If we don't use Plymouth or Marlboro, we have to go to Haverhill, is where Adamson Industry is, and there's some police departments on the Cape that go there. They drive a car up there and they lose it for three or four weeks while it's getting, while it's getting done.
Well, thank you for exploring the geography of what was available.
Tracy?
No, I like to save money. The only other thing I could, that thought that I had with that, though, was when the Fire Department bought the fire truck and they borrowed from ourselves. With the rates being what they are, that may be something that we should be considering, our capital stabilization fund.
No, that's a great suggestion. We could probably, we could probably lease some cruisers out of capital stabilization.
Or, and then the department can pay the town back. That's how we do it, the Fire Department. The Fire Department had the town stabilization, well, it was before we had the town stabilization, but they borrowed and their ambulance fees paid the, the fund back, so. But it's, you know, at that kind of rate, that's, that's a lot of money we could...
Oh, yeah. It was next to nothing. Chief's right. When we started this program, it was like the municipal money, they were giving away. You know, it's like, why not take it? But then, you know, we got caught with the economy, and things are coming down a little bit, but still...
We have money. We have money in a, in an account. I mean, it would be paid back over the same. I mean, we could work out something, but it's just a thought. Anyway, thank you.
Can you just repeat that the Fire Department's going to buy the police cars?
No, no, no. I think that's what I said. I got that done.
Good try, Chief. Good try. Okay, thank you.
He's not here to defend himself.
Okay, the difference is they have a funding source, right?
I was kidding, yeah.
And that's, I mean, that was one of the differences. That's unfortunate, but, I mean, your budget is paying for it anyway to an outside source at a higher rate. So, anyway, that's my thought.
Thank you, Tracy. Mark?
No, I'm fine. Thanks, Chief.
Okay.
While Chief's here, maybe he can give us just a quick update on the generator? It's another topic that...
So tomorrow, the, so the generator bid was awarded. The company is out of, we'll say Fall River. They're in the Fall River, Rhode Island, but they're right there. Tons of experience with this. They're coming tomorrow. They've already been out to the station twice to do some site plan work. They've been working with Robert from Maintenance. They're coming tomorrow with a crane to take out the old generator, disconnect everything, take it out, and then start prepping the pad. They have to drill through the existing pad to find the conduit that they're going to need to use to, to pipe it back into the station. If everything goes well, we could see a new generator sometime in June or July. The initial estimate was 50 weeks from the time that the contract was awarded, but they said when you, sometimes when you order a bigger piece of equipment, it comes in sooner than that. And I know that, that they were working on trying to rebid the, I think they were trying to rebid the generator rental, because right now, we have a 20, 255 KW diesel-powered generator behind the station that we have to keep until the new one gets installed, gets fully installed and tested, and we make sure it's up and running. So I know Jennifer has been working on that to find the funding to get that done, but it's, we're going to be probably just shy of 18 months from the time the generator died until the new one is fully up and operational. If you remember, based on what we were told by the experts, trying to fix the existing generator was, was not an option. We would have spent a lot of money, put a part in it with no guarantee that it was going to continue running, so this was really the only way that we had to go.
Any questions for the Chief?
No questions for me.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Jennifer, I miss anything, or is that good?
Okay, the next item we have on our agenda is the final review, recommendations, and execution of special town meeting warrant. Bob, would you like to walk us through that?
Certainly. We need to set the, the recommendations, so I thought that the best way to do it would be just to go article by article, and Article One is the transfer from free cash of $1,200,000 to the OPEB trust to maintain the town's schedule for the OPEB unfunded liability.
Is that current or past?
It is. We have a current actuarial analysis that, so this is for this year's contribution.
I move that we see if, I move that we approve of Article Number One.
Do we want to do it individually? You recommend.
Yeah, so we'll do the recommendations for each one.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Four zero on that. And then Article Two is the public safety recruitment bonus.
I make a motion that we recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then. Article Three is, this is a, a one that's appeared new here from the last warrant, warrant draft, and it's for the previous year's county retirement assessment. There is a supplemental assessment for public safety that we receive in addition to the several million of our annual assessment. The amount was 243,000. I, I guess we didn't get invoice for that, and the money wasn't paid, and it floated back into the free cash, but it's an obligation from the previous fiscal year.
How does that happen, though? I've never seen that happen before. How did we not budget for that?
No, we did budget. It was, it was in the budget. The money wasn't paid, so it closed out at the end of the fiscal year.
So you put it into free cash now, you just want to take it out?
Correct. It's where it just flowed back into free cash. The check should have went, before it went into free cash, it should have went to the county.
Okay.
Do I have a motion? No recommendation?
I recommend that we recommend Article Number Three.
I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I still, I still don't understand how we didn't know that. If we had 243,000, wouldn't we have caught it? I mean, I've just never seen that.
Yeah, I haven't either, no. Okay, and then Article Four is the school resource officer coverage.
I make a motion we recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion we recommend Article Five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion we recommend Article Six.
Second.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye. Ayes come easily to the Scottish.
I have it in my supia. Okay, Article Seven?
I'd like to just say something about this, Madam Chair. I really hope that the safety improvements mentioned will help protect drivers along the side of the golf course, because we have had cars hit, and we've also had one individual report to the town that she was injured and said, "Don't worry, I'm not suing, but I think you should know this. There needs to be some protective barrier between the road..." There needs to be some protective barrier between the road and what turns out to be more than one of the holes." I had assumed originally it was just one hole. So I guess I would like to see a serious piece of attention paid to that, because improvements, and then a mention in the explanation of better safety, it's not pinned down.
Right.
Is it safety for golfers only, or?
If I may, I can go through this article. I work with Scott's division, the golf directors' division. Usually in the fall, they'll have capital articles, and they're not overly, you know, involved in the sense that they try to get some capital done in between the seasons. So the clubhouse area is probably the third year that they're working on the clubhouse, and the safety is usually related to cart path movements around the clubhouse and also around the Baber Hills patio area. So in clubhouse work, it is painting and also bringing the clubhouse up to, you know, code in some areas. Lightning detection system is really necessary, and that allows a warning system across the golf courses to the golfers, because it is an issue on golf courses. In the Baber Hills patio area, there's a patio expansion actual design that's been made available by the golf course director that indicates that they're trying to expand their outdoor space for dining and things like that and make a safer movement between the patio area and the adjacent cart path. What you're talking about is golf balls leaving the course periodically. So they are working on an overall plan, and they're going to look at that during the overall planning. You really can't build nets and things like that, because they're leaving at such a high elevation. So they do warn the golfers, you know, in terms of who are the predominant people responsible for having them leave the course, so.
Nice way of putting it.
Who wants to get that talking to?
Yeah.
No more shanking the ball.
Well, from that perspective, we have signs and other means to, you know, tell them to take care. So we are looking at, I think it's Bass River, in terms of some of the master planning, to take a look at taking, not specifically for that, master planning to create a better course, a more efficient course in terms of its maintenance and lower costs and better play. And part of that, we'll be looking at those issues.
Can I ask, do you anticipate the safety issue and the, for people going along the Bass River course, to be included, the budget aspect of that, in the annual town meeting budget?
No, we already actually are in the process of doing a design. It was funded in a prior town meeting for Bass River as one of the areas we're looking at. So that's already underway.
So for some kind of protective-
So the construction will be coming, yeah. Well, no, actually, it's less of a protective issue. It's more of a aligning the course, so it, you know, the golf balls aren't hit parallel to it. So because you can't, can't build a net that high.
You can't go up that high.
Of course, yeah.
So in a lot of cases. So, you know, there's a lot of different options that they can use. Their primary issue right now is, the links was the opportunity to open up some holes that were closed during, you know, some times of the year, because of drainage and things like that. Now that that's operational and working well, now they'll look at the master plan in other areas, and let's say Bass River. So if they have to close down holes or do work there, that they have the links. So it's a sequenced sort of capital plan by the golf department, and part of it is to look at safety in all aspects. You know, the golfers themselves, the adjacent properties, things like that.
That's an area for school bus traffic also, which the letter writer underlined.
Yeah, I mean, we're aware of it. I mean, I think that when they do the master plan, they'll take a close look at it, but the master plan is not predominantly just for that one issue. It's for the entire course.
But it's under review.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's part of the design process.
Okay. So do I have a motion on Article 7? Or a recommendation? What exactly are we?
Recommendation.
Recommendation. Do I have a recommendation on Article 7?
Not from me.
Well, I mean, it's, we didn't get a presentation on this, other than what we just had. It's hard. It's hard to know what these costs are, but-
Well, I can give them, some of them to you. I mean-
Has this stuff already been bid? I mean, they've already got estimates for this?
No, I don't believe it's been bid, no.
Not bid, but they have estimates.
They have estimates. The lighting system is sort of, the lightning system is sort of a package, so that's within the context of the budget for the package. And I'm looking at the capital improvements portal right now.
So we have $2.7 million in the enterprise account.
Correct.
And for our future planning, this $390,000, is that going to affect that? I mean, obviously it's going to affect it, but are we still going to have the funds to do everything we need to do?
The future planning, we already allocated that to budget, so that isn't included in the $2.7 million. So the, the design work that we're doing on the other course, on Bass River, is in part of the $2.7.
I move to recommend.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Moving on to Article 8.
I make a motion, we recommend 8. We've talked about this.
I'll second this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to recommend Article 9.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move to recommend Article 10.
All those in favor?
Second.
Sorry, you have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to Article 11.
I move to recommend Article 11.
Second.
Can we discuss this, though, for a second?
Oh, sure.
I'm just-
We can just put the motion on the table and then open it up for discussion.
She did, she seconded it. That's why I asked for discussion. I'm just wondering why the finance committee was 3-3. What's the, what was the discussion behind that? Why did they split?
Do you want me to? My understanding is they're concerned about a revenue plan and other things they have brought up under another authorization that was prior to this. So it was unrelated to this, it might have been unrelated to this specific request. This specific request is to take advantage of the fact that the irrigation system will substantially improve the viability of the plant material, reduce the maintenance costs. It makes a lot of sense to put that in. But I think there was an issue in the original authorizations of this in terms of information that the finance committee wanted for the overall project.
Well, it's always the thing when we create a park, is maintenance part of the upcoming-
Right.
-operating budget? That's, I mean, it's a valid question. We're going to grow grass we can't mow? I mean, it's a real question. Is there a plan?
I'm not sure about the maintenance plan. They were asking for, is there revenue to then fund that?
Fund what?
They were looking for, what is a revenue anticipated out there? I don't know if, Jennifer, you have any? You were at that meeting.
Good evening. Yeah, the finance committee is concerned about a maintenance plan, and they didn't want to vote this until they saw a maintenance plan for the park. I did tell them that, you know, as we put together the operating budget, we will look at that and see, you know, when the project ends, how much would need to be allocated for the maintenance of this park next year. I think the project's supposed to be completed in August and September, so you probably wouldn't fully fund it. But I know there is a maintenance plan that they had in the feasibility study at one point, and they looked at that. So that's something we'll be looking at the operating budget. But the finance committee wanted to see the whole maintenance plan that night. And so there was a little bit of back and forth on that.
Well, they didn't hold off until town meeting. I mean, they made a recommendation here, so.
Right, so they were going to hold off on town meeting. And then there was a lot of back and forth, and then someone made a recommendation, and it came 3-3. But there was discussion, you know, let's just hold off till the night of town meeting. You know, we can, you know, and look at the maintenance of it.
I think that personally, that's important. And, you know, to Kurt's point, like, I haven't seen the overall grass part of it and where the irrigation's going to go. But, you know, we've done that before. We've installed grass, and we haven't really done irrigation on a lot of these properties. But, you know, the town needs to have a plan to maintain these parcels, so. I know there's a recommendation on the floor, but I'd prefer to wait until town meeting, but.
Any other questions or comments?
I think, I think now's the time to get this done. We, the project's under construction. We've got grant money tied up to it, so let's get it done, let's get it worked out. I don't see this, passing this prevents in any way coming up with a plan that addresses that. I think they're two separate things. I think we've got to get this thing done and get all the necessary work, so I strongly support this article.
Do you remember when we put a septic system in Ed Parker's, at the thing that sat there? We put a septic system with no bathroom. For probably about 10 years, we invested money in that. We had no plan to build a building. So I don't want to waste $160,000.
I don't see this as a waste.
Okay, any other comments?
Madam Chair, I have a, I guess it's a parliamentary question about the finance committee's recommendation. I noticed that it was 3-3, but this is considered a recommendation. It reminds me of that silly headline ages ago, Harvard wins! Harvard 29, Yale 29. I mean, this doesn't seem like a very firm recommendation to me, and I actually think that it would need a majority vote to be called a recommendation.
Let me clarify that. I think everything's called a recommendation, whether it's 7-0, 3-3, 2-3. The recommendation would be, say it was like, you know, 2-3, then it would be 2-4, 3 against. It's just showing the public-
It's just showing the vote.
Exactly what the vote was. 3-4, 3 against.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may, this, the, they separated the project into horizontal construction and then vertical, vertical being the building, and then the boardwalks. So horizontal was already underway, so actually well on their way to moving forward on the project. The vertical or the park components, like the irrigation system and things like that. This irrigation system is going in the horizontal portion. That is the work that's underway.
What other pieces are yet to come for this?
I think the bathrooms are, and then the boardwalks. Is that right, Jeff?
Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. Just the bathroom. The boardwalk's part of what's ongoing right now.
Right.
So you want the irrigation in the ground before they finalize it? That's why you're doing it now?
That would be ideal. What, wasn't mentioned here, but it was mentioned at the finance committee, is the contractor is donating a portion of the irrigation system to get the grass established. So this irrigation piece would be building off of that and would be enhancing the more delicate plantings around the restroom and the walking paths and that type of thing. But there will be irrigation in there that's being supplied by the contractor. Not part of what was required, it's part of the design process. We actually did not fund irrigation. But at this point, if there's going to be a backbone of irrigation provided, why not distribute that to other sensitive planting areas? So that's what the proposal is.
To other sensitive planting areas that are plants or grass?
That are plants.
Plants. So it wouldn't be, so this $160,000 wouldn't be to help mow the lawn? That we'd be looking to have covered?
No, there will be some need for operating budget expenses associated with maintenance of this park that we will be working with the finance director and town administration on in the next fiscal year. So that is a good discussion that is happening about that, but that's really for the operating budget for next fiscal year. This will be just to get the infrastructure in that can be utilized for ongoing maintenance in the future.
To the tune of $160,000. So what do we have? We've had our motion, and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reluctantly, aye. Okay, 3-4, and one abstention. Moving on.
3-0-1.
3-0-1.
And then analysis of the PFAS groundwater contamination.
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend Article 12.
And do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Article 13, zoning amendments.
Has the planning board had their-
Yes. The planning board held a public hearing and made their recommendation, which is included here. Now, what I wanted to point out is that we weren't able to schedule a planning board for this evening, but we scheduled the planning board to meet with the board of selectmen and present the article at your next meeting. And so, you know, the question would be whether you would-
Motion, we recommend from the floor.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We have to vote the entire warrant and place the warrant, too?
Yes.
Make a motion that we place the warrant. I'm not sure with the actual term.
Execute.
Second.
And you still need 14, is that a-
We haven't done seasonal employee hours.
From the floor, 13 and 14.
They're both zoning.
Yeah, include those both from the floor.
All from the floor, right.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that was to approve and execute the town meeting warrant?
Do we have any other items that have to come up at this point? We're at the end of our agenda.
I don't think we need helmets for people on High Bank, but I may put that in for a future town meeting expense.
I have to, I'd be interested in the actual statistics on that, Joyce, because I've lived here my whole life, and I've never seen that. I've never heard of that, so.
I mentioned it to Mike Stone, and he said, you know, because he lives in that area up off, or lived in that area up off High Bank. He said, "Oh, yeah, we drive around that rather than along High Bank Road, because our cars get digged." So that made me think it was more than one injured person.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to adjourn.
I have a question first, but.
Okay, your question?
Is there time at our next meeting to be able to do the, who's going to take which article? Are we doing that on our next meeting?
My understanding is that we are. Okay, I have a move to adjourn. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We will see everyone next week.